Need more, not less. If you're doing a temporary trial basis, you've got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more interest revenue this year than what was predicted just because interest rates went up, you know? Use some of that, that wasn't budgeted. We just sold, how many acres we sold in? About two hundred and fifty thousand dollars right there that came in that you didn't, but it's not budgeted. I mean, you've got a hundred thousand, if this is a trial deal, you've got way more money than just sitting there and it's inappropriate, inappropriate, whatever's the right, you know, if you're doing this on a trial deal. Taken from our roads and bridges, I think people would, that would be eating. I know I could be upset about the citizens community thought you were taking from roads and bridges. Maybe you guys don't get the phone calls I get. But I wouldn't get a lot of work to do and that is not the place to take it. John, I want to push back on your trendology a bit. We're not taking from roads and bridges. We're not increasing as much as we did there for the last few years. I mean, that's, that's the bottom line. We're spending more than we ever have. Taxpayers spend more than they ever have on roads and bridges in King Ridge because the rate's higher than Severville. We're just wanting to lower that rate just a little. So we're not going to spend it here, we're going to spend it here to try this and not make the budget a bigger budget because we're doing it. If we take it from revenue out of someplace else and just add it to the budget, we're making a bigger budget. And it's making another layer of government. And we don't know whether it's going to be, I'm going to give you backup. I believe it will be the right thing to do, but I wanted to prove itself. And to make it a bigger budget for 2020 because we did that, I think it's the wrong thing to do. If it was neutral and it didn't cause us to make a bigger budget, then I'm for that. And then when it displays what it can do, then we go forward from there.
So, so who's, I mean, is that just your personal view? I mean, if that's, because, you know, I haven't heard anybody else, I would, you know, missed that, but, you know, who says it's revenue neutral? I mean, is that, you're saying it's revenue neutral? Because if you're looking at this guy to cut, to save enough to pay for his way, I honestly think, you know, that's the wrong reason to hire this person. This person has more opportunity to generate revenue than he does to save enough to, so that's a completely different thought here of why I would even recommend having some help, you know? I put sixty hours a week in, it was commissioned or more, I don't know, I tracked it, I'll guarantee it's at least sixty, you know? So having some help, but, you know, the way this job description looks, like this guy's going to be doing your job, not my job. You know, you're having to do all the budget stuff, you know, and looking for all the savings in the budget. There's so many things that I know, that, yeah, we oversee our budgets, we, you know, we're really got some great reporting now. I mean, I really like the software, we can really do some good budget actions, really make some good management decisions, but if you guys want to hire somebody to help you and do this budget side, hire a consultant, you know, hire a consultant and get, you know, because you guys are part-time too. That's not what I see, honestly. If you read the job description of what this person would do, the opportunity is, in my mind, is not to save enough money and paper, so it's everything that he brings to the table that betters this community. If we, if you could sell this as he's helped the highway department black top twelve more miles this year, you know, that's a plus to this community. He's helped the, whatever, you know, I mean, that's, that's the way I would sell this. Anyway, I, as, as it stands right now, I, we just, we just cannot, if you want a trial, find the money someplace else, in my opinion. If you don't, then I just, I'd drop it, honestly. Because we've got too much to do in these highways and bridges than you. Yeah, that's just my opinion.
If we're using this, which I understand as a trial basis, to see whether it works, which I think is a good idea, which I believe it can work, but for business as a trial, after the trial basis, is this position not going to be through ERPS, is it not going to be budgeted or created position in ERPS at that point?
That's what, that's what the resolution indicates it would be. It'd become another office with a budget.
Now, we're just trying to find a budget to see whether it'll work. Can we not find something in rainy day, riverboat, something like that, to come up with the money? It's not taken away to do something else, but that it's dealing with roads and bridges?
Sure. We can do exactly what the people that are against this are saying we're going to do, which is make a bigger budget, another layer of government, cost us more money. Now, we can argue all day that this position is going to be an advantage to Montgomery County and do a lot of good things, but the people that are against this say, you're just going to make another layer of government and it'll cost us more money.
But if it's the right thing to do, yes, it's the right thing.
And if it could be revenue neutral, they can't, yeah.
Regardless, regardless if you, if it's revenue neutral or not, you're still adding a person, so that you're, that still adds a position. So it is, whether it is neutral or not, we still add a layer, so to speak, or either it's a good idea or it's a not. If it's a good idea, it's an investment. So on the HR aspect of it, as a business owner aspect of it, if it's a good idea and if it's an investment and it's with the right intention, the right motivation, then it's the right thing to do. If it's not, then so be it. That's what I'm asking. So I would much rather explain to those that think it's another layer of government that this is the right thing to do, this is what the person's going to provide, and if we find in here that it's not working out, then so be it, we're wrong, we'll just do what's right. There's nothing wrong with making a bad decision, as long as the motivation is right. You just learn from it, go on. So if we do what the best intentions and it doesn't work out, so be it, then this time next year, don't have the budget.
I do, I do have a little concern too. I know who you guys are talking about hiring and what I've heard anyway, and, you know, honestly, for the kind of salary you're talking about, the job, I mean, you need somebody that's done this, you know? To put, to put somebody in there that hasn't done this and expect them to be up to speed in six months to earn their way, I think, I think that'd be awful tough for anybody to do, even the person you're talking about. It, I would, and I know we've got to look at the interview process and the whole deal, but I caution a little bit about doing this for the person and not for a reason. I hate to drag, drag, drag the job script for a person. Not that I don't like it.
You got anything else, John?
Yep, my turn. Okay, Mace, I said something yesterday morning about Mace. Poor folks are floating out there. Stacy Larkin called me a month ago or so and I ran out there and looked at water everywhere standing in Mace and it's, you know, foundations are having issues and septic's are being, have to be pumped out. I'm just the new guy, so I didn't know any history going on. I came back and talked to Tom Cummins, obviously, Tom Surveyor, he said that that's not a legal drain. What the issue is, is Mace is not an incorporated town. It's just a little burg. So there's no board, there's no appoint person, there's no place to go and to deal with one board and all that, so that's an issue. There's no funding mechanism because it's not a town either. But these poor people are citizens of this community and we need to help them. And so that's the approach I took. Tom, Tom said, they went through the drainage board a few years ago, looked at maybe some discussions with Pickett's on the back and taking a drain. Okay, that's fine there, but we're talking the whole stormwater issue of town, it's not just right there behind the church. Steve Reiser was in the office, he's on the south side of 136 and standing water over there. So anyway, I took Tom and the engineer, Peck, and Jeremy, the highway director, we all went out there one day and even if we could stay in the county's right away on 200 South and do some surface dredging, I mean, culvert, get it over to what appears to be storm sewers in the US 136 right away, still got some issues with that. We started, we went over, looked in those drains on 136, walked through some people's yards and got back to the ditch that's on the south side of 136, found what looked like possibly a crushed tile back there, parts of water's coming out and nothing like you would assume. Walked back out on 136 and the lady right there north of the old grocery store happened to be getting her mail and told her what we were doing and she said, my gosh, she said, we bought this house three years ago, she said, literally the basement had eight feet of water in it. Wow. She said, yeah, she said, and look at my garage, she raised your garage door, the concrete had raised three inches right in the garage. Holy cow, I mean, this is a, it was something issued, it obviously didn't just happen overnight. So anyway, back, back up a little, how do we, how do, what we need to do is, is get an assessment of what the problem is, what the solution is, and a ballpark of what it's going to cost. Banning Engineering does the majority of the work for the surveyor. There's this, because this again is an unincorporated town, it's a little tricky, who's going to pay for this or that? Maybe we could go after some OCR money or something like that. All that process, we all know, takes months and months longer than, than that. I think it's our responsibility to help these people out here. Nobody's going to step up and do this if we don't. I propose that we put thirty thousand dollars that we had in our contractual services lineup back in that, which you had a budget until the last five minutes of being, you know, approved, but, but put thirty thousand back in that. I talked to Banning Engineering, I don't think it'll be that much to do it, somewhere close, but that, that will definitely do it. Banning will do that engineering work, find a, and, you know, the, the issue needs to be, to find out what the issue is and how to fix it and what that fixes and costs. I think that's our responsibility. Those poor people are so thankful that somebody's even, first time they're not being told this isn't my problem, you know? And so anyway, that's what I'd like to see, I honestly, I'd like to, you know, suspend the rules and approve that, put that money back, at least thirty thousand back in that lineup that we had a hundred thousand in earlier, so we can get that done. Now, how, how that project gets completed, that is up to those people, you know? I mean, that's up to those people in that town. We're going to have to come together and get that done. But to get this thing started, I think that's our responsibility to do that as citizens in this community. That's what I'd like to request.
With this, John, I mean, it's what you're talking about, Dan, and you're saying this isn't, because Mace isn't incorporated, it's not, there's not a county issue.
It's not a regulated drain, so that, you know, that takes the, the drainage board out of the equation, you know?
Are you going, does this end up in doing something, you know, run to a county?
Well, there's, the creek is right behind, right south of the houses on 136 and there's two storm drains right in the easement on 136, so sometime it had to go somewhere and it's not now, you know? It wasn't a small, and it may be as, as, as much as, as, you know, finding out what's the problem, you know? But who, who does that? Who does that? One person in that town, you know? This is, this is our opportunity to help the citizens of this community and, and help them. I mean, you need to go out there and see Mace float.
No, let's go see Alamo, it's the same way, let's hope they do.
Whitesville, New Ross, Mace, Alamo. You say, you know, we get it started and then pick it up, like, we don't have any, we don't even know each other in that town, I mean, how are they, how are they going to, like, bring it to fruition if you put it on a plate and hand it to them, if they don't have a...
Have you done that? Have you put it on a plate and handed it?
You said, you said that they, they don't have any incorporation, they don't have any means to unite and finish something. I'm not saying...
They got us.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying that we don't need to help drain these towns, I'm just saying, what's the step two? If we pay to engineer it, then where does it go from there? Where does it go from there? Do they have the mechanism to bring it to fruition or not?
It could be as much as that community come together and ask for a regulated drain.
One citizen in town, I mean, how would you, like, string it together?
Ten percent of the, the land, land has to come together to be a, or to ask for a regulated drain, is that right? You know? So if there's, if there's an opportunity to do that, it could be, it could be a regulated drain.
It's in a watershed area, you get ten percent of that and let go to the drain.
To the, to the... I'm just telling you, they've been told all this time, this is what it's going to take to get off this.
Is that beyond Peck's scope or, you know, his, what he does?
Yeah.
That's going to be a project, I mean, I haven't been out there and looked at it, but that's, that's something.
I mean, you know, we all deal with watersheds.
Right, I agree, I agree.
And, and I think that that needs to be identified so that the people in that watershed can work towards that, right?
I just, I just mentioned Gary's question pretty quickly, because, yeah, that's well beyond, and the time, that's going to be time consuming. I guess, I guess I have a question too, John. You mentioned a couple of things about 136 and, and storm drains. Are we dealing with anything in state right away or that might be?
We've talked to him twice about this, actually, Peck and I have been out there and he went back out there probably actually the third time, and they are more than willing to, to help us with, if there's something that needs to go under that or correct it because of that, but they're fully aware of those two storm drains that are in their easement, so they would be on board, you know, any cost is, that's occurring, you know, anything that needs to be done in, in state easement.
So they, what, what watershed?
It's not a regulated drain.
But it drains, so it can be formed into a watershed.
There's a potential, I actually took a map over to, to Palmer's instruction or whatever, Kenny Gaskin, I haven't talked to Kenny yet, but, you know, there's, there's all kinds of things flying around and...
Well, I mean, this, that's...
Oh, and this stop that or this and...
It's, you know, it's, we're all forced and we all pay in watersheds and legal drains. Why can't they establish one and look at it from that perspective?
That would probably be something that would, could come out of this fix, what the, what the fix is. Awesome, you know?
I, I was just sitting here thinking, it's not been that long ago that the Drainage Board took over all these subdivisions that the city vacated, basically let us have back and out of the county that are all screwed up. We took, we made, didn't make them, but the people in those subdivisions became a watershed and they paid for all the expenses and fixing them, including the engineering. Oh, yeah, that's part of, that's part of a fix when you have a watershed or a public drain problem. And I think what's take, well, I don't think it even takes fifty-one percent of the people in that watershed anymore to get a petition going. I mean, I, I can think of one case where one person got one going and twenty-eight other landowners didn't want to do it, but anyhow, I think that might be a good solution, is just, okay, get somebody to want to create a watershed out of there. I know that's what we've done with other subdivisions and I would call, since it's not incorporated as a town and people have just moved in there, it's, it's a subdivision really, and it should be treated like other subdivisions. The people that live there take care of it. I think that's the, the starting point. I mean, I think it does, obviously, there's problems, obviously, we need to work towards a solution, but...
Right.
Engineering it is a long way from...
Engineering is, is doing the assessment, so this is not just the Joe Blow, I think, this is, this is understanding what the issue is, coming up with a solution and a cost that goes with it. It's not that big a deal. It's less than thirty grand, yesterday Joe, I think, said maybe seventeen, but that's, that's what's going to take to get this started. And then that, that community then will have the opportunity to take it to the next level. If they want to, if they want to get a petition together, right now, they don't know what the solution is, they don't know what the problem is. They know what the problem is and they don't know what the solution is. This would provide that, that identification of the problem and what the solution is and what it fixes. And maybe it is going behind here, Pickett across over the top, but this step needs to be done. And I think it's our responsibility as leaders of this community to help this, this burg out. I, I, you know, that's just, that's why I'm here. If I didn't believe that, I wouldn't be asking for it.
I'd be home to evolve in that, you know, the...
You know what? I don't know, I mean...
There would be a pond, but...
Then there would have to be a pond, you know, you're asking how many homes? What is that watershed, what is that affecting there? Is that the surveyor's job to look at that?
This study would do that.
Okay.
Study would do that. But, but, you know, contractual services lineup, we had a hundred thousand dollars in there. I, I'm just asking you that, and you took ninety-five of it out or eighty-five of it out, put thirty back in and we'll get this done. That's all I'm asking. That's all I'm asking you guys for.
I know back in '08, we did the same thing to the east side of Crawfordsville, the Shelley watershed, and did a problem for many, many years. The drain, but it had a legal drain in it, I think, the Shelley, the Murray accident. Drainage Board did what seemed to be done and then those people started paying assessments. They didn't like it. I got lots of threats with that, but we did, the Drainage Board did what they had to do. I think, I think the people in Mace would probably, might be interested in doing it. And there were a few people that were really, really affected by the Shelley that were interested in doing something. Drainage Board, I think, that's pretty well, they didn't do a full-blown reconstruction, but they had gone in, they had enough money to fix what you need to fix to get water flowing. I don't know if you're familiar, Greg, how water's flowing now, I haven't checked it out.
Well, that, that's just begun. That, that honestly, we got the outlet fixed from the end of the open ditch to, to the, there was a big bottleneck in there, that's, that's fixed, the outlet's fixed, but honestly, that's, that's now being engineered, retention ponds laid out and that, so no, nothing's been fixed as far as, other than the outlet, but that's a four hundred thousand dollar project. For those, in my opinion, those people that live in those homes right there are not responsible for that four hundred thousand. If that's an economic, a huge economic impact to this community, then we're going to have to address that too. And, and that's something that we'll, we'll get to when we find out exactly what that number is and what the plan to do there. But right now, that's being engineered and ballpark, you said it's four hundred thousand. There is an OCR grant for that, it's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that old Sheridan has used, and it's a huge opportunity for Sheridan to fix that drainage problem. And so there's going, there's more, more to that as far as this whole community goes than just those people that sit over the Shelley drain. So we're going to have to address that more in economic impact than just an assessment per home. Or those people couldn't be, couldn't be assessed long enough to get enough money to pay for that. So if that's ever, gets fixed, which it needs to be fixed, but today, I guess, I'm, I'm asking to put thirty thousand back in that lineup so we can get this engineering done. And we'll, we'll take it from there.
I'm new, I've been on that long. The watersheds, I think you talked about, created before, that had been created here and been created.
Well, I don't know that there, is there a watershed?
Well, no, but I'm saying previous ones that had.
Oh, yeah, yeah, what, what I'm saying is, is there a watershed that needs to be created there who shows, who's, where it shows who's responsible for that area? That's what I'm, what I'm asking, you know, percentage of the...
What I'm understanding is what you're saying, that in the previous watersheds that had been determined, that you said you were involved in.
Oh.
How, how, how did that come about? There was money put up front in his ad?
We're assessed on that.
We're assessed.
We're assessed, we pay taxes.
How did that, where did the money come to determine, to create that watershed?
Where did that money?
I mean, afterwards, I understand that it's created as an assessment, but...
I do not, I don't have the answer.
It's paid out of the general drainage improvement fund and then when the legal drain is created and that is assessed to all the landowners and all that.
There we go. There's where the money should come from.
Basically borrowed from the Drainage Board's general fund.
Okay.
I agree with John, it sounds like there needs to be some help down there.
Yeah, there we go. Tell them to remind them.
But how do we go about doing it from past experience? How is it done? And if it gives us, and done, then how do we get that created and get that started and help these people out? Would, how, petition out, or try to work up to thirty thousand or seventeen or whatever, if it comes up, twenty thousand grant money or whatever?
We need a landowner to file a petition with the Drainage Board, order that to become a legal drain. Till that happens, neither the Drainage Board nor the Surveyor have any jurisdiction. It's just a private drain that is a problem, is where we are right now.
There you go, John.
So it's an interesting question, and it's really the point on Mace, which is, what do you do then?
Well, you, you, John, you go protect the petition back to the woman in Mace, have her sign it, get that process started.
Right, because it just seems like, okay, he's assessed on his drain, I'm assessed on my drain, we're all paying for our own drainage, and then over here, you have some people with a drainage problem. It doesn't seem fair for Don and me and you and everybody else to even put a plug nickel towards their drain. Well, right, out of the, out of the fund that's especially for that.
Well, just remember though, there's one other, I mean, there's one other flip side to this, that's all fine and well, but what if nobody applies for this? Because the purpose of what the drainage law is to drain agricultural land in order to increase production. These people are not farmers. They don't make any money off their land and the idea of putting more money into their land so they can solve a drainage problem that they don't really understand, I think it's fair to say. It may not work that way. I think that, I think that the fundamental question that is raised here that everybody has to think about is, what, what do we do about those times where people say, look, I don't, and some farmers might say this year, I don't make any money out by the end of the year, but if residential people don't see it the same way as farmers. Farmers see that as kind of investment, if I get better drainage, I might get better production. So just be aware that the issue, if, if someone comes and signs up to make legal drain, then we know what we're doing. So if no one comes forward, and then we're right back where we started, and we may have to figure out a way to solve problems like that. And that's, I think that we're talking about this because for many, many years, the people in, people who live in houses in Mace don't view the Drainage Board as really their, a solution that's very good for them. And I'd say empirically, nobody has filed a petition to make legal drain in the last fifty years, so that must be true. And we do know it's been explained to them before that they can do that, but no one will do it, so...
The drains, man, that's just one...
I just would have you be aware that... I just would have you be aware that there are going to be some drainage issues which are not, don't lend itself very well to the solution provided by the drains law, because that's really, that's really for farmers.
There, and I don't know, you know, this is just a question, and the drainage maintenance fund is $1.275 million. Could, I mean, can it, can any of that legally move, be moved from the general, how much is in the general drainage nut?
Hardly anything.
Okay.
Yeah, you guys, you guys may appropriate money to the general drainage improvement fund every time you do a budget. I don't, I remember it being done once.
I don't remember it.
It was all, it was quite some time ago, maybe, I think it was before Jimmy even, but I think Terry may have been involved in it, but it was done once on kind of emergency basis. But the law doesn't allow any of that maintenance fund to be used, it can only be used on the drains, which is collected. Same thing with the reconstruction loads, can only be used, so the surveyor has no money even to go to the study unless you appropriated for him or he collects it from the people who are signed up to be on legal drain or they're imposed that way. But, but I think Mark, Mark makes a point, and I know John's trying to do this, but I think it, the good point is, obviously, the more information you give the citizens of Mace relative options are, and the more conversations you can have, the better chance they have of solving that problem ongoing. I think what John's discussions have shown is they really don't know where to begin to deal with, where to go, and unlike, unlike farmers who kind of know the drainage board works, they, that's really a foreign language to them. So anyway, I don't know how to work out, but again, that...
John, are you on the drainage board? I mean, is that something we can try for? I'm all for the, for their own bootstraps and... And I appreciate your, your passion and your willingness to want to get something done out there. I've lived within five miles of it my whole life.
This is my recommendation, or I would ask...
Well, what I'm asking is, can, what I'm asking is, can you help that? They need to have a community meeting and ask the drainage board or, or, see, you're saying it, and I appreciate that, and I...
I had the surveyor, the engineer, the highway director, I met Indot, this, I'm fine now because I've done all that work, and this is what it's...
They haven't had anybody from the community. Where's the community? Get those, get those people together with the community.
I mean, seriously, like, I would...
We represent those people. Get those people, talk to these people.
Yeah, that's my, I think that's the best solution for now.
Yeah.
You tell Mace, tell them, sorry, you don't matter.
That's not what you're saying, John. That's not what you're saying.
Absolutely, absolutely not.
All right, do what you want to do. I'm just telling you what I'm asking for.
A meeting to get us with the people in Mace and we'll go up.
That's not the ends to the means that we were working on, just like tussle over your shoulder when it doesn't go your way, John. We're trying to find...
It's not going my way.
I didn't say anything funny there, John. I'm, I'm saying, we're trying to find a solution to the problem.
We're trying to involve the people in Mace.
Right.
I've done that due diligence, guys, that's why I'm here. I appreciate your input. I appreciate your input.
They will be waiting for a day...